I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the February 5th County Commission Meeting. And before we start, I'd like to remind everybody to silence their cell phones. And there's meeting documents next to Commissioner Barth over by the -- he's holding that up. And as soon as our new judge comes back from getting coffee, this might be the one of the last times or the last time that we'll get to see his smiling face around here because as most of us are aware, he was appointed Judge in Mitchell. And he's been a long-term supporter of the county commission and legal advice. And frankly, I've learned more from him in a couple hours than I do when I have to pay for one. So I would like to congratulate you. Frankly, you've just been an incredible support and advocate for the commission and the county. And it's a great promotion for you and we're going to miss you. But thank you for being here this morning and we hope and wish you well and Godspeed.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Couldn't happen to a nicer guy. We'll go ahead and get started with routine business.
Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the routine. I'm going to start this with foot and mouth disease again this morning. With approving the agenda for this morning, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, motions unanimously passed.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of January 29th, 2013.
Yeah, I'll move the minutes.
Second.
Wait a second, Dick, you having -- is your system working? Is your system working? No?
I can hear.
Okay.
Most of them.
We have a motion and a second to accrue the county commission minutes of January 29th. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, motion unanimously passes.
Item three, are bills to be paid in the amount of $543,410.50.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Any questions? We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign, motion again unanimously passes.
Item five is personnel. Item A is to approve the routine action.
I'll move routine action. Second.
Good morning. I was going to ask you what happened to item four, but... That's the first time I've ever seen that happen. Must be a secret.
Obviously, we didn't have any.
We'll blame it on the new judge. We have a motion and a second to approve the routine action. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Item B is to recognize significant employee anniversaries for February 2013. Good morning.
Maggie Gary from Human Resources. We have some significant anniversaries per February. First, Jeffrey LeMaire from the Juvenile Detention Center. He's a juvenile case worker, celebrating 35 years of service. We have Patricia Krupa, who's a veteran service officer for Human Services, celebrating 30 years of service. And she is with us today. We have four jail staff members who are celebrating 10 years of service. We have Sid Dunn and also Derek Lauer, who are correctional officers. Mike McGovern, who is a sergeant. And also Jackie Noobloom, who is a correction system operator. And she is with us as well today.
Awesome.
And then we have Corey Pecus, who is a highway maintenance worker for the highway. He is celebrating five years of service.
If we would just have the employees with the anniversary stand, we'd like to recognize you for your unbelievable service. Thank you very much.
Item C is to recognize volunteers and county government for January 2013.
In January, we had 230 volunteers in six different departments throughout the county. These volunteers make a significant impact to our operations and we're thankful for their assistance.
And item D is to consider a motion to approve a new classification of corporal at pay grade 16.
As you know from the briefing memo regarding the Deputy's Association Contract Addendum on today's agenda, the jail is interested in creating a position of corporal. We've had the position description questionnaire reviewed by Condry and Associates. If you approve this action, we'll formally create the new position and classify it in pay grade 13. Or, excuse me, 16.
Thank you. We were briefed on this last week. I think we all understand the reasons for doing it. It makes good economic sense. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Kelly. Those in favor of the action, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
The next item is application for abatement. Kyle Helsa? And he's not here. Pam Nelson? They are.
The two abatements that we have on the agenda today are for the elderly freeze, elderly and disabled freeze. And ID number 23175, assessment freeze taxes, the amount of the abatement would be $1,077.11. And ID number 78777, for the elderly freeze, the amount would be $218.73.
Motion to approve the abatements?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Those, anybody have any questions about those? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, motion unanimously passes.
Item seven, our notices and requests. Notice from American Lung Association in South Dakota of intent to conduct a fundraising raffle on Thursday, March 21st, 2013, at Valentino's Restaurant, Sioux Falls.
Is there anyone here this morning from the American Lung Association? No? Okay.
I'll make the motion to authorize the auditor.
We have a motion. We don't think we need one on this one, John.
It says first reading and authorize county auditor.
We're on seven.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't read either.
Okay, item number eight are planning and zoning notices. Pat Herman.
Morning, Pat.
Pat Herman from Minnehaha County Planning. The first item before you is an amendment to Article 19, which is the conditional use permit part of the county ordinance. Right now, the ordinance only allows the planning commission to revoke a conditional use permit. They're not allowed to review it and set new conditions or change conditions. What this amendment would do would give the planning commission the ability to do that, to amend, revise, add, or delete conditions. It gives them a little more leeway in working with the property owner and coming to a resolution with somebody that's not meeting the conditions of their current conditional use permit. It comes to you with a unanimous recommendation from the planning commission. And so today, this is the first reading and authorizing the auditor to publish notice of a public hearing at 9:15 on February 19th to consider this amendment to the county zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Pat. Does anybody have any questions for Pat? Again, this is a first reading, so we won't be taking any action other than publishing the notice. Questions? No questions? Motion to move to set the authorize the auditor to publish notice.
Second.
December 19th. Okay, we have a motion and a second to publish the notice of hearing. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, motion unanimously passes. Item B.
The next item is an amendment to the zoning ordinance again. This would be for Article 12.03 Home Occupations and Article 27 Land Use Codes. The planning commission directed staff to review the home occupations regulations, looking at building size and the type of uses that are allowed. This amendment would allow a larger-sized building based on the size of the property the home occupation is occurring on. It would also better define what a home occupation is, what would be allowed and what isn't, making it easier for the public and for the planning commission to know what can and cannot be done as a home occupation. And it also adds a new article, Article 27, which is land use codes. And those are referenced in the home occupation part, so we need to put that in the ordinance. Again, this is a first reading for a public hearing at 9:15 on February 19th in this room. And this is to revise Article 12.03 and Article 27.0. So we need authorization for the auditor to publish notice.
Any questions for Pat? If not, we would need a motion to publish the notice of hearing for February 19th.
Motion to publish notice?
Second.
Motion and a second to publish the notice. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, motion unanimously passes.
There are no petition for compromise of lien today. The next item is opportunity for public comment.
If anybody has any public comments that they'd like to make on any item that is not on the agenda, we would welcome that now. If not, we'll move on to... I've got 12 minutes after. We'll go to probably 11, I guess.
Okay. The next item then will be a briefing on the National Institute of Corrections Technical Assistance Report from Minnehaha County Jail and Justice System Assessment. Sheriff Mike Melstead.
Morning, Sheriff.
Morning, Commissioners. As you know, in December, we had the National Institute of Corrections Technical Assistance Consultants come out and review our corrections and justice system. In particular, they focused on the Community Correction Center on West Russell, the old Elks Club that served this county well for the last 20 years as a work release facility. However, as I've indicated, it's kind of aging and dog years. It's... When you read the report, and just for your information, well, I forwarded you copies of this report. And we will also post this report on the sheriff's office website so that the public can view this report online. There was nothing earth-shattering to us as a result of the report. Some of the information, much of the information was what we felt we were seeing. But we wanted to have people in the business, experts in this field, under the Department of Justice leadership, come in and review this and give us some roadmap of what the next steps we should take. We know that we've been dealing with a growing inmate population in particular, a growing inmate population of local Minnehaha County beds. And that's a challenge for us. Our jail remains full most of the time. We do some overflow out into the Community Correction Center. And as the consultants identified, that is a facility that's very hard to supervise inmates, even minimum-security inmates like we house out there. Our hands are somewhat tied because we're under a conditional use permit. So we're restricted on who we can house at that location. It is minimum security. Most of the people in the facility are able to come and go. They go to work or they, you know, go out and do community service or service trustees. So most of them are very low-risk, but we do house some jail overflow. And they believe that the housing units out there are too large to supervise. One of them has 124 beds, another one has 83 beds. And in fact, one of the, if you want to get to one of the housing units, you go through the boiler room. And so they've identified that they're, you know, it's probably not going to be a good or a good option to continue to utilize that as a correctional facility long-term. And we're doing this early in the process so that we can identify what does the county want to do. And one of the things that they said is not only look at relocating the Community Correction Center, but also evaluate with the needs assessment, the upper floor of the current Public Safety Building or the old jail, since the county was going to gut it anyway and make it into an open Bay area, that that would also serve as a possibility to relieve some of the jail pressure by putting maybe a dormitory setting up there and also some infirmary beds. So long range, I think they're saying hang on to that space, maybe prepare that space for the future because it may serve us to avoid having to go up two floors in our jail. I'm going to tell you that going up two floors in our jail, even though it was built and designed in a way that we can go up two floors, that is very expensive process, very expensive real estate to accomplish. And it's very disruptive on the operation of the current jail if that occurs. So I would like to avoid having to add additional floors to the jail. And I think that we can accomplish our goals long-range over the next five, 10 years at least to meet the needs by relocation of the Community Correction Center, which happens to be sitting on four acres on a golf course across the street from the New Events Center. And as you know, the value of that land has gone up significantly. I think we can address it with that and maybe some of the current unused space on the Public Safety Building. Next step, their recommendation, again, we need to do a bed space needs. That's part of the needs assessment. We'll develop a classification plan so that we know that if we build another location for our community corrections program, we know what type of inmates we'll be able to house out there and then alternatives. So the biggest recommendation is that we start working to identify members of a criminal justice planning commission or committee. Commissioner Benega and I have talked and as the chair and also my liaison, we will work together to identify people on that committee. We'd like to have a small primary committee and we'll bring other people in. There may be times where we need to involve Lincoln County Sheriff, the U.S. Marshals, city police, the courts, as we develop a plan. But we want to have a smaller working group to start identifying those and then bring in the many people that utilize our facility other than those that are contained with them. And so Commissioner, I'll work closely with Commissioner Benega. And we're going to look, keep looking at options for locations, potential locations. There have been some discussions with the city and the state both about potential locations. I see value and others do too in having that location near the prison area just because the neighborhood up there is used to having a prison or a jail in their backyard. And quite frankly, they've been good neighbors to the Department of Corrections. And for us, our highest risk for that type of a facility would be probably lower risk than their lowest-risk offenders. So, you know, we'll be moving a low-risk facility into some area. We need, you know, close to a bus route. We need, you know, some of these, a lot of the inmates that we have in that community corrections ride bicycles, so close to the center of the city is, there's a benefit there. So I'll work with you and I think, you know, everything, I think we'll make our meetings, I would assume there'll be an open, an open and public meeting. I think that the reason we have the current jail that we do was that, in great part, because the process was very open, very public, and the community was directly involved and aware of the process we were going through. And by the time it got to the point that we needed to build a facility, they stood behind us and allowed us to do that. And I think we need to do it that way again, and I, and the Commissioner does too. And so we're ready to start moving forward and we'll keep you informed. I assume we'll come in and update you when we're having meetings. We'll post the meetings so that if the public or the media want to do attend and see what we're working on, we'll welcome them.
Thank you, Sheriff. Do any of the Commissioners have any comments or questions for the Sheriff? Commissioner Barth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Sheriff, I appreciate your forethought in all of this. You know, out on the street and in coffee shops and on the blogs, people are always saying, you know, how come that guy isn't locked up forever, whatever, on whatever issue it is, whether it's a fourth DWI or whatever. But during our budget stuff, not a single person showed up and asked us to spend $20 million more for a jail. I've suggested to people I meet at coffee shops and stuff who say these kinds of things, well, come on down and tell us that you want us to, you know, raise taxes and build a warehouse for another thousand people. And they've never showed up. And I, clearly, the Governor's CJI plan and yours are kind of dovetailing together. And I really look forward to building the correct facility for our county.
Thank you. Any other comments, Commissioner Kelly? Mike, could you talk briefly on the loss of paid, the revenue losses we've seen in the last few years and how this thing could help them too?
Well, one of the relief valves that we have is a possibility of not housing other people's prisoners. We house all of Lincoln County's prisoners. We have partnerships with 14 other jurisdictions. We partner with the U.S. Marshal Service. In America, the Marshal Service, the federal government doesn't run jails, they run prisons. So the marshals rely on county jails across the country to hold their prisoners until there's a court. And if they're found guilty, then they go to federal prison. As such, we've had up to 90 marshals' prisoners in our custody. And one of the advantages for this county has been over the eight years that we've been in the facility is they pay, you know, $80 a day, which helps us offset our revenue, or, excuse me, helps offset our costs. It helps us with debt service. And between the Marshal Service, the Bureau of Prisons, DOC, and our partner counties, our county took in $1.8 million last year in revenue. And it's lower, this, you know, we anticipate it'll be lower because we're filling up with local county beds. But that makes for inefficient federal government if we don't have beds available for the federal agents. I'll tell you, the U.S. Marshals spend a lot of windshield time transporting prisoners out of our jurisdiction when they need to come back to court and federal court in Sioux Falls anyway. So for us, I mean, as an overall taxpayer, I would view it inefficient if we don't have some beds for them. And so if we keep climbing with our local numbers, we're going to have to keep, we're going to have to call the Marshal Service or call our neighboring counties and say, we don't have room. And quite frankly, we serve as a regional facility, a regional jail. It's worked out well, and I hope we're able to. And I think if we move forward with community corrections and work on some other alternatives of incarceration, which is part of what you and I and the committee will work on, other ways to keep people out of jail and keep them productive and paying their taxes and supporting their families, if we're able to do that, we may be able to house not only as many marshals' prisoners and other county prisoners, but we may be able to long-term house them even more. And that's a good way to help pay for what we sometimes have to build or our expenses.
Certainly. In '12, didn't we amend the revenue estimate about $600,000? And I don't know what, '13 was down two, I guess, wasn't it?
Yeah, we're, you know, we've had to adjust our revenues down. But a classic example is, like I said, we've been up to as high as 95 marshals' prisoners. And I think yesterday, we're at 36. And so that's quite a hit. If you figure, you know, do the math, if you, if we're down 40 marshals' prisoners at $80 a day, that's a considerable sum of money that the county's been utilizing to help offset some of our expenses and pay our debt service.
So we think...
I do have the Warden Young here and Chief Deputy Boyd in case anybody has any questions for them.
Any comments from either one of you this morning?
Darren Young, Minnehaha County Jail Warden. Just a couple of quick comments. One, I think on the report, the NSC consultants came in and they were very impressed with our community here. They were very impressed with our stakeholders meeting with everybody and the desire for everybody to come to some goals and reach them together and work together. They find that rare. Secondly, I would let's say that they also provide us with some options and as the Sheriff said, some roadmap maybe to some things we should consider. And some of those things we had maybe had in our own minds, but they can provide us resources to other places that have implemented these programs so that we can try to take the best way to, and best approach to implement those programs. And lastly, as the Warden, or the Sheriff kind of touched on the count, you know, I've been here for 18 months now and the inmates have gone up, our count's gone up 100 inmates. And that's without, you know, with any effect on the Governor's plan and program, which could affect us. And we don't really know exactly how that'll affect us, but it will affect us. And I think we all know which way it probably would go. So we need to be proactive in our plan here. And so, come and talk. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Warden. Any questions for the Warden? Michelle, would you like to make comments? Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments from the audience? I know there's a few people that will be interested in reading that report and then going into the next step for the quote "needs assessment" of that process and forming a committee to come up with some conclusions and some directions, which will probably also involve some work groups to get information to that group so we can move ahead at some point. Obviously, this is a 40- or 50-year commitment, and we want to do it right, and we will do it right. So we'll take our time to make sure it's done with some assessment. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And along that line, when we, when I read the report, it was very interesting that one of the submissions was the letter, I believe, from, at the time, Steve Metley to the county commission regarding the vote regarding the zoning requirement at our County Correction Center, where obviously, nobody with any violent or any sort of sex crime could be located at our County Correction Center. And I just want to caution our partner in City Hall with this. You know, we're working with the state right now. We're going to be having to work with Senate Bill 70 and trying to accommodate an increase in the number of potential inmates that we're going to have at our facility. And I think when we're looking at a county correction center, one of the linchpins is going to be that I believe that our judges and I believe that our sheriff are best at classification of the particular individuals that should be in that county correction center for work release. I don't think that it's a city counselor's job to decide who can be at that county correction center. I can tell you that it has hamstrung our jail over the last 21 years to have individuals that had some violent behavior in the past. But because they have a DUI now, they can't go to the county correction center. And that means they fill a bed at our jail downtown. And that is not the best use of that particular facility. So once again, I'm just going to say let the professionals make that decision. And I hope that City Hall is listening.
Thank you, Commissioner. Excuse me. Any other comments, questions? If there are people who are interested in being part of a work group or a part of the committee, if you would let me know personally, I would like to hear from you. I think it's important that we have that information soon. And that if you can't get ahold of me, you can also get ahold of Mr. McFarland, and he'll get that information to us. But we'll move forward with that in a very short period of time. Ken, any comments?
Just one. It's something that the Sheriff mentioned this morning. Just a reminder for any member of the audience, the report will be posted on our website very soon, I think, yet today. So it'll be available for inspection.
Thank you, Ken. I was going to make some comment about that report on the website, but I think I'll keep my tongue in my mouth for a while.
Yeah, we do.
I don't believe we need to take any action. If we could go back to the public hearing?
Okay. Item 10 is a public progress hearing on Minnehaha County Workforce Training Project to Expand Southeast Technical Institute's Commercial Driver's License Training Program in the amount of $120,000. Janice Grabney.
I'm Janice with CCOG. I've been here before, generally in regards to applying for CDBG funds. And actually, twice in the last year, the county has applied for funds on behalf of Southeast Tech. What we have today is a public progress hearing for the first grant, which was to expand their commercial driver's license training program. I have a sign-in sheet. I sent it around, the audience, I need to send it around here.
Commissioner, Commissioner sign it.
Thank you.
The original amount of the grant was $120,000. It was to be used for buying another semi-tractor. They only have one. It is used here and also goes to remote locations for training. So they're really kind of short on what they need to train the drivers. They have their new, their new semi-tractor now. They had allowed funds for 20 scholarships. They've had 15 so far, so they're really making good progress and, you know, working through their program. And so any comments anybody has or...
Thank you for coming. Any comments or questions for Janice this morning? I believe this is a public hearing. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Just a comment on the importance of this grant in educating people in driving safely on the semi-trucks across the road, just because our nation runs by semis. And if we didn't, weren't transporting coast to coast, we would shut down a lot of places in a big hurry. And I just think it's, there's always a shortage of truck drivers, and I just think it's great that we've found this grant that we could use to educate more.
One of the things that they found was that the average age of the truck drivers was something like late fifties, and this is something that, if you look at who is applying for these, a lot of them are people who, English is not their native language, a lot of them are immigrants. And it's a good fit, it's a decent job with a good income, and it's something that they're more than willing to do, so it's been very successful. And we, I think they only started taking applicants through this program in September, and three-fourths of the scholarships are going now. Any other questions?
I'll be right with you.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Thank you for your comments, and thank you for your work, and certainly our partnership with you has been very progressive and productive, because I know the CNA things that you've worked on, and now with the truck-driving applications in school.
And the good thing about the truck-driving one is it's not just the scholarships, but they have another truck now. And their concern was they actually, their truck actually, that they had before would actually be in North Dakota for training at times. So they had a truck but didn't have access to it all the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't need to do anything but have your report, and we do appreciate that. Thank you.
Item twelve is to authorize the chairman to sign addendum to the contract with the Minnehaha County Deputies Association regarding the establishment of a corporal position. Michelle Boyd.
Good morning, Michelle Boyd, Chief Deputy, Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. This morning, you just approved the new classification of corporal to the pay grade of sixteen. So I'm here to request you to sign the addendum to the contract, which would establish the corporal position. The deputies, the deputies association has voted on this, and I have the President, Ryan Quals up here, he's signed the addendum. So we're just requesting that you sign the addendum as well. We've made the necessary wording changes to move forward. We'd like to start with that immediately.
Any questions or comments for Michelle?
Move to authorize the chairman to sign the agreement.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? I would just like to publicly thank the deputies association and the union for being a cooperative partner in this. We do appreciate your support, so thank you. Any other comments from the audience? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with the deputies association in regards to the corporal position. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and Ryan Thornell to update Regional Juvenile Detention Center Policy and Procedures Manual. Todd Cheever.
Good morning, Commissioners. Todd Cheever from the Juvenile Detention Center, asking that we enter into a contract with Ryan Thornell to help us update our policies and procedures. We've gone through JDI facility inspection, and there is a large number of policies that need to be updated and completely, some new policies that need to be added. There's hundreds of areas that we need to hit on. And Ryan is a professor at the University of Sioux Falls. He's also was one of the leads in the facility inspection team and is a perfect fit, since he knows quite a bit about our facility already. So I'm asking that we enter into that contract, which would end at the end of this year. It does have a maximum cap of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Any questions for Todd? Do we have Commissioner Hybarger?
Just to comment, that I'm fully a supporter of this as being on the JDC, in that Todd has been working on this, and there's no way that, I feel like, our staff that we currently have can get these policies and procedures done that have been recommended to go forward with JDAI. And these funds are coming from money that we've saved through the program by implementing JDAI. And so I believe it's an important next step.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any, Commissioner Pecus?
Well, I just did some quick math. He's gonna be working, to get twenty-five thousand dollars, that's twenty-five bucks an hour, I just did some quick math, that would be twenty-five weeks of forty-hour work week. That's a lot for a professor at USF. I'm figuring that it won't make it to twenty-five thousand dollars, but my guess is that there's enough there for him to be able to spend the time necessary to get it done.
Thank you, John. Other comments, questions, anyone from the audience like to make any comments? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve the, we don't have?
I'll make a motion.
Huh.
Second.
I guess we don't have a motion, but now we do. So we have a motion and a second to approve the contract? Those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Todd.
Item fourteen is Consider a Resolution to Declare Taxes on the Twenty-Two County Treasurer's List of Uncollectible Mobile Home Taxes as Uncollectible. Pam Nelson.
This is, once a year, we do this, and basically, we're declaring the mobile homes that we have, the ones that are uncollectible. We have about thirty-six of them this year, and the total was around almost twenty-four thousand, a little less, twenty-three thousand, eight sixty-nine twenty-two. Keep in mind that just because we're declaring them uncollectible doesn't mean we're not gonna collect the money. It just means that the sheriff doesn't have to go out all the time and serve them. So I'd appreciate your support. Thank you.
Any questions for Pam? Commissioner Barth?
I would just comment that over the past four years, we've declared a hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars uncollectible. And if you just take the twenty-three thousand plus that we're doing this year, to use the federal way, you know, they, they cut a trillion dollars over ten years, well, this would be two hundred and forty thousand dollars over ten years, and if not more. And so it's not chicken feed. And if you look at the law, it says that they can't be moved, and if they are moved, the person that moved it is liable for the, for the cost. And the first incident of moving it without their correct permit is a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine, the second one is a five-hundred dollar, and any additional ones is a thousand dollars. Seventeen of these have been moved, and without, apparently without the permit and without the taxes being paid. There's obviously criminal activity going on. Anyway, I don't think it's chicken feed when you add it up year after year of, "We're not collecting this money." They changed the law to taxes like they do auto, real estate instead of like automobiles, and we're not getting, we're not getting the money that we're owed.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments from Commissioners? If not, I need a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution to declare the taxes uncollectible in the mobile homes. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion unanimously passes. Thanks, Pam.
Thank you. I don't know, do you want me to respond to the question about the difference in the numbers?
You know, that would be great, because there is a significant difference in one year of the last four, and Pam did some research, so thank you.
Yes, in two thousand and nine, there was around twenty-eight thousand, in ten, there was like twenty-four thousand, a little more. But anyway, in eleven, there was seventy thousand, which is significantly more than what we were used to. But quite frankly, thanks to the sheriff's office, Jason Gierman's been doing a great job. He's gone out and he's checked to make sure those mobile homes are there, so we have a better handle on how many there are. And he made a real effort to catch us up on that. So that's why the two thousand and eleven year seemed so much heavier than the others. Generally speaking, they should be going down as long as we keep up with it. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Cindy, for looking that up, getting us that information. So we appreciate the extra support.
Okay, the next item, item fifteen, is to authorize the chairman to sign notice of award of CY twenty thirteen, Title Two, Alternatives to Detention Subgrant in the amount of twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty-two cents from the South Dakota Department of Corrections for JDAI Grant for Expanding JDAI Services to Partner Counties. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, on January twenty-second, you approved the submission of a grant proposal to the South Dakota Council of Juvenile Services in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. And that grant was to help expand JDAI services, not only into Lincoln County, but then to also provide the framework to implement JDAI practices and procedures in the First Judicial Circuit. As per our application, we had a five thousand dollar split for services in Lincoln and twenty thousand to the First Circuit. And we did receive notification last week that the council had approved the application. And why they didn't just say for twenty-five thousand dollars, I don't know, but they approved it for twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. And so what you have before you, I need an authorization for the chairman to sign the notice of the award, accepting the grant, and to follow the necessary policies and procedures that are associated with that grant. And we'd recommend approval.
Thank you, Ken. Any questions for Ken? If not, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions, comments from the audience? If not, those in favor of the JDAI grant for expanding services to partner counties, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, motion unanimously passes.
Item sixteen is Consider a Motion to Donate Two Utility Trailers, Title Number Y-90222 and 10867309 to the Sioux Empire Fair Association, and Authorize the Chairman to Sign Title Transfer Documents. This was deferred from January twenty-ninth. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, the Auditor's Office has been going through an inventory of all the vehicles and trailers and making sure we have all the necessary titles and paperwork associated with each of those items that are in our inventory. When we went through that process, we discovered that we had two titles that were in the name of Minnehaha County that we could not match up with our inventory, and we ended up discovering that those trailers had at some point been moved out to the Sioux Empire Fair Association, and that's where the trailers are located at. And so what we're asking, and neither of these trailers are on our fixed asset report. So what we're asking, just to keep things in order, is that you declare those vehicles, those two trailers, as surplus, and then donate them to the Sioux Empire Fair Association. And we'll have the chairman sign off on the titles, transferring title to the two, to the two trailers. And from what I understand, they are used quite heavily out at the fair association and have been for a number of years, so.
Any questions for Ken? My understanding is this needs to be a unanimous vote to declare it surplus. Any questions, comments from the audience?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to declare them surplus, to donate them to the, to the fair and to authorize you to sign that.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion that's approved, or a motion that has a second? And any comments or questions from anybody in the audience? If not, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, motion unanimously passes.
Item seventeen is An Update in Status Report on the Eighty-Eighth Legislative Session on Bills That Impact Minnehaha County. Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson, Commission Office. As we do each week during legislative session, we're gonna go over a few bills that could impact Minnehaha County and the activity with those bills of the previous week at the legislature. As always, I've got a few bills that I'm gonna highlight, certainly not the full list that we're following. And if you have any questions about bills that I don't mention, please, please ask me, and we'll get those answers to you. I'm gonna start with a bill about three pages, four pages in on your, on your memo, House Bill eleven oh five, an act revised the maximum security deposit for residential premises. This is one that was actually in a hearing yesterday. Our Human Services Office had a great concern about this because it could have a direct effect on a number of their clients if rental deposits had been raised from the current one-month, equal to one-month rent up to two months or higher based on perceived risk. That bill was defeated in committee, and I know that was one that, again, Human Services was watching very closely, as it could have had a big effect on their clientele. Moving forward to House Bill twelve twenty-four, a few pages in, an act to allow municipalities, counties, and school districts to post certain information on the internet in addition to or in lieu of certain publication requirements. And this lays out a fairly precise framework, but it does present a possibility that local governments can post their legal notices on the internet if they choose to do so. And again, there's a number of different requirements that you have to meet if you're going to reach that standard and follow the law as drafted here. But it's an interesting look at this topic. It comes up, it's come up a few times before, and this, this one will have a hearing today in House Local Government. So we'll, we'll be watching that and follow up in the next couple of, next week. That one was introduced after we briefed you last week. Next bill, or next page, next bill, Senate Bill Seventy, an act to improve public safety. This is one that's had quite a bit of discussion. Obviously, it will have a number of impacts, could have a number of impacts on Minnehaha County. It was passed by the House last week and is awaiting the governor's signature. And as a bill that was drafted at the request of the governor, it looks like this one will be signed into law and become, become practice this summer. Next page, Senate Bill one twenty-eight, an act to provide authority to counties to prohibit and restrict the use of fireworks and to declare an emergency. This was one of the bills that came out of the SDACC convention last fall, one of the platform bills that was up Senate Local Government and was tabled last week. We were listening in on that one, and that hearing lasted all of about five minutes. So that didn't, didn't go very far. Next, next page, a couple of the, number of the open, open government-related bills that came forward, I think I described them in previous weeks as kind of cleanup bills to the overall open, open records reforms that have gone on over the last couple of years. This one, one sixty-seven, is an act to require government bodies to keep minutes of executive or closed sessions. That was up last week after we briefed you, and that, that was defeated, that was deferred to the forty-first day. And last bill I was gonna mention is on your last page there, Senate Bill two ten, an act to provide for assessment of agricultural property based on market, repeal the methodology that assesses agricultural land based on its agricultural income value, and to dissolve the Implementation and Oversight Advisory Task Force. It's, would change the methodology for valuing, valuing ag land, and that is, was originally set to do before Senate State Affairs. It's now been referred over to Senate Ag and Natural Resources, has not been scheduled for a committee hearing yet, but would, if that were to, were to move forward, that would have a fairly significant impact. Those are the bills I was gonna, had highlighted. I believe Commissioner Barth may have had an additional bill you wanted to talk about or mention.
Mr., thank you, Robert.
If any of you would have questions of the bills that I had gone over.
I just have a quick comment. I'm reading my schedule here, and on the Senate Bill two ten, it says that the agricultural-based property tax issue passed the Senate, Agricultural and Natural Resources Bill eight to zero?
That was, it was referred over to that, that committee from, and I didn't update that line on the, on the memo. But yes, it started in, in State Affairs and was referred over to Senate Ag and Natural Resources and is awaiting hearing in that committee.
So it has not zero was just, just to get to that committee?
Yes.
Otherwise, I was going to have some shock therapy.
Commissioner, I, I had the same reaction when I first looked at it. I, it took me about five minutes of staring at the, at the page to realize what they did, because it, it looked interesting as, as I was first looking at it.
Thank you. Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Chair, I just, I did get a letter from a constituent in Minnehaha County, a prominent tiling installer, complaining about Senate Bill one seventy-nine, and according to his description, it would require an engineer to okay each plan, which he doesn't feel is favorable. But I think the one key is that it raises the limit that we can charge for, right now it's a hundred dollars is all we can charge for a drainage permit. Some of these projects are quite large, and... Some of these projects are quite large and require quite a bit of, more than $100 worth of stuff. And this bill would allow that to happen, and I, it's not that I'm trying to make any money on the deal here, but I think that the, you know, it doesn't mean Minnehaha County would have to charge more, it just would allow a larger charge. Anyway, this tile installer is quite concerned about this.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Hybarger?
I did bring this up to Ken McFarland this morning, because I also received the same letter, and he said there are some concerns in that bill, and that the association's Bobby Wilcox is looking at it and having conversations with, with people about it at this point. Anything more to add, Robert?
That would be my only comment, that I did talk to Bob Wilcox into last week, and he indicated that he thought there, there may be some movements specifically on the provision that deals with professional engineering. And I, I know that Scott Anderson and the Planning and Zoning Office have been looking at this bill and are, are familiar with it, but, but that is a section that is getting, continuing to get some, some close attention.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Robert? Robert, thank you for your input and your update.
The next item is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Any of the Commissioners have a liaison report for this morning? Commissioner, tell me.
Carrie, Carrie Devers down in Lincoln County, working on the transition to the, to the HR services down there. But she did send me a note, where to go, she did send me a note on the progress that's going down there. I just thought I'd brief you on it. So far, they've met with all department heads, toured most of the buildings, and met with many of the staff. They've set up office, ordering our supplies, posting don't notices, and working with IT and getting the staff directly ready. All three professionals that are going to be working, I guess, with Lincoln County have been down there and visited the site. They've developed the FMLA procedures, training still needs to be done, and started to file audit review, started updating mandated postings, and started reviewing recruitment-related items. Discussions have already begun on potential compensation study for Lincoln County, conducted this year. So they're moving along pretty good. It's, it's been rather time-consuming this last couple of months, and they expected that going in, so progress is good so far, and I think Carrie's happy with the way it's going.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from other liaison relationships? If not, we'll go to new business. Any new business? I have just one item. I think, I don't know if everybody got this, Ken's not here, but we just got a notice from the South Dakota Department of Revenue about what the CPI will be for 2014. And much to my surprise, 2014 CPI is 2.1%. That will be something we will have to deal with in the budget process, so that's the first guideline that we have. Kind of like opening a Christmas present and getting a bag of salt sometimes, but that's the life we live. So any other new business? If not, we'll do any old business. Old business, I do need a motion to go into executive session for personnel and litigation issues.
Motion to go into executive session for litigation and personnel issues.
Second. Motion and a second. Those in favor of adjourning and going into personnel, into executive session for personnel and litigation issues, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.